We're making the order, roll call.
Okay, Mayor Wester.
Yep.
Wolkmann.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Huss.
Stankey.
Here.
So, so far, no Gus.
No Gus. Public forum, none. Cosent Agenda additions, corrections? Now we need a motion to approve or move, second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Wolkmann.
Yes.
Stankey.
Yes.
Huss.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Okay, Resolution fifteen oh five is that matching money, but I don't... If it was mine, I don't think we need to pet... Help people buy a house, I don't think that's up for us.
That's, um... That's kind of my view on that. I... I don't think it's something we want to start, but if we're only gonna do two, say, and then we have three or four, I think we're just gonna get in... Get ourself in trouble.
We'd be better off-
I think we have enough money to spend without that.
We'd be better off to get another subdivision, water sewer. Everybody can build a house.
I think that's something- Let the bank do the money.
Yeah. Anybody else got something?
Can you just have a motion not to participate then if that's the plan?
I'll make that motion.
Second? Roll call.
Okay, Stankey.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Wolkmann.
Yes.
Huss.
Yes.
Four sixty-nine, the ordinance, that's our third and final.
This would be third and final reading of the ATV ordinance. Any... Hear anything on that, chief?
Nothing different.
Nope. The only change that we had talked about last time is actually on page seven. It's where you strike out that one item of B there on Ninth Street up there. That's the only change. And it's, uh, yeah, ready for approval.
So move, second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Wolkmann.
Yes.
Huss.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Stankey.
Yes.
Okay, fifteen oh six is hiring our city seasonal workers.
Yeah, let's take a look at page twelve is applicants. And that just shows you any of the folks who submitted an application and the folks who are recommended for hire then are on page thirteen. So, a lot of these folks are returning employees again. And it had been the practice then to increase wages by twenty-five cents per hour. So this includes twenty-five cent per hour increase in the wages. I gave you that total on that. Um, it's one thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars is the cost of that twenty-five cents in that was budgeted. Um, just looking at the campground manager and the assistant manager are both the same. Jack and Shannon are returning. Hannah Walton would be a new hire. Uh, Andrea Ross is returning. Mike Mitchell returns. Eric Hawkinson would be a new hire as the the parks worker, working from April first to the middle of November. Jamie is a, again, a returning parks worker for the summer. Phil Farley would be our one guy on the vegetation harvester. Matt Rydell and Cameron both would be coming back again for a third year. This is actually an internship for Matt. So he's gonna hopefully be finishing up his program that he actually studies this, so. City Blake Beal. Well? Yeah, I do. I'm gonna call you, but... Well, Gus, I'm not... I'm not getting anything. I'm not even calling you here. Let's see, let's try this.
Good thing you had it fixed today.
Yeah.
I wanted it to be light without.
That's probably about as much faith as I have in electronics.
They must have called me to be the repairman.
Yeah.
When it comes to that kind of stuff, like I said-
I didn't, I didn't get you there, Gus.
Okay, I'll try you.
Oh, I think you were calling me. So...
Oh, there you are.
Hey, I think we're good.
All right, we're good to go, Ed.
Well, I don't, I don't see ya, but I can hear ya.
Oh.
Well, let me see. You see me now?
Oh! God, yes, that's too bad.
The other way was better.
You're looking good. I'm hanging up the phone. I'm hanging up the phone, Gus. All right.
Okay, Resolution fifteen oh six, motion?
We've, uh, went through everything. We're up to hiring summer employees now.
Okay.
Sneeze you lose.
Any question?
Also move on fifteen oh three.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Huss.
Yes.
Stankey.
Yes.
Wolkmann.
Yes.
Reese. And Cleveland.
What was the question? Or what was we doing?
Okay, we're voting on the resolution to hire summer people.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
Okay, electric billionaires.
Yeah, that's on page fourteen. I want to talk through this. Uh, little bit, make sure everybody really understands what's, uh, what's going on, 'cause we've had computer problems with just five of our electric customers. Okay? But they, they're large customers who have three-phase power and then they, uh, so their charge, demand charges for, for this, uh, power. So again, with three-phase, you're billed in two different ways. Like anybody else, you get kilowatt-hour charges. Okay? But you also get so many KW of demand. That's... I always think of it kind of as the maximum amount of power you ever suck at one time. That's how your your demand of, of KW would be versus kilowatt-hours trickling in as you use them. So, uh, these five customers, we've had some, some problems with them. They've been underbilled for several months. And you see that total there, it's two, twenty thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars. Um, now, I emailed you more detailed information on the accounts. Did, did everybody get the chance to look at that? I've got copies of that stuff if anybody wanted it. And again, I'd remind you that if you ever refer to any of the accounts, all that stuff's considered confidential, so we'd ask you to just refer to them by their number that I gave them. Um, but, so, we have this, this problem with the electric for these five customers. Each one of these five customers has a multiplier on their power. And that's multipliers the same whether it's for kilowatt-hours or for KW. So, uh, meters with the multiplier, they read this base number that, that the meter reads and then they just simply multiply that base times the multiplier. So, in this case, the multiplier is either forty or eighty. And it varies depending on the meter and the type of, uh, CT setup that it has. Um, so anyway, the root of this problem is that the, the KW demand was not multiplied by the multiplier. Okay? So in essence, the customer was, was billed one fortieth or one eightieth of what they should have been billed for demand. Okay? Again, all of the kilowatt-hour calculations are correct. Um, special note there that this is a computer programming problem, it's not an electric meter problem. Okay? So we have all these new electric meters out there. They're still functioning just fine. This is a computer programming problem. So, why did this happen? It happened, uh, for two reasons. Although, when you get right down to it, I couldn't tell you why things happened when they did. But these are the two reasons why. Um, K-VAR metering, that for some of our large demand customers, we compute K-VARS. And K-VARS is a, is a way to, uh, compute the customer's power factor. That's a measure of their efficiency. And if their efficiency is not very efficient, okay, they can be subject to a power factor penalty. It costs more if you don't operate very efficiently. So, this, uh, this K-VAR calculation is a manual calculation. Kate does it on a separate spreadsheet. And then she's able to then come up with the total number of KWs including penalty. And that's a manual calculation that just goes into the system. So she just forces it into the utility billing system. So you know that that would always be right. But, um, so, two of these customers had been having a real good experience with their efficiencies, so much so that it was no longer necessary for us to do this K-VAR calculation for them. Every month they were taken off of the K-VARS. So, uh, so their readings were put in automatically again through, through the system, not forced in. Yeah, not forced in by, by Kate through a K-VAR, K-VAR calculation. Okay? And this works fine until you couple it with the next problem, which is this concept of the fifty percent ratchet. Again, it, it costs... This is the justification behind things. It costs a lot more to serve a three-phase customer. So, and three-phase customers often can demand a lot of power, but only at certain times or certain seasons, like, like ag users, they only basically use a lot of power during fall. But it still costs to be able to provide that service to them, so demand customers have this fifty percent ratchet for the remainder of the year. So the minimum that their bill ever is, is fifty percent of what the peak is. Okay? So, and that's a rotating, uh, a rolling calendar year, uh, excuse me, a rolling year, so just a twelve months. So whenever you hit a new high, twelve months starts over again. Okay? So this ratchet worked fine for all of our customers until you get to what the problem ends up being. You get to the thirteenth month, it no longer recognizes this high ratchet. And then the, uh... So the multiplier is not in the system, so basically the demand reading is only multiplied by one. It's only the original reading. And that ends up being, uh, being the problem. Okay? So, knowing what we know, now, there's a couple settings in, in the computer system that were set up, um, were set up incorrectly from the original changeover, which was in around March of two thousand thirteen. But these things occurred, uh, a little bit over time because, again, because this K-VAR thing and we forced some readings in, or because this ratchet. And, and it, uh, it only, only when it got to the thirteenth month, then would it start to, uh, to read wrong and read, and not multiply. So, um, basically, we'd, we'd be here, um, I just want you to know that we'd be seeking payments for these underbillings. You know, according to our electric tariff, which is the operating rules of our electric utility, we can seek repayment of up to twelve months of underbilled charges. Okay? So four of the customers are less than twelve months. So one customer was more than twelve months. And I would not propose that we would seek repayment from that one customer more than twelve months.
So do they, um, have to pay that all at once or how?
No. Yeah, my, my plan is that tomorrow, well, I'll go meet individually with all five, with each of the five and explain their situation, um, that we got everything corrected, but that, uh, you know, they would owe this amount and that we're willing to work with them on payment arrangements.
Wow, some pretty good chump.
Yeah. They end up being a lot of dollars, son. So I had Kate and Bill come tonight to, uh... If you had any questions, uh, it, it's just very, very unusual, you know? I, I don't know that I really have too many more comments other than that. Other than to know for sure, we only have thirty-three demand customers or something like that. And they've all individually been checked, so.
So the problem has been fixed, though?
Yeah.
And we make sure we don't do this again in fifteen months from now or something.
The main parameter had been changed to know that it will always multiply. They had a parameter in there that they could check that says that the KW multiplier is always the same as the kilowatt-hour multiplier. And it was checked as no. So you would have to, um, manually know that, that the KW needed to be multiplied to. And that was changed, though. They changed that so that the-
They changed that this morning, yeah.
That now is, the two are tied together. There is never an instance where the KW and the kilowatt-hour uh, readings would not share the same multiplier.
They are, is the same people as who set the program up? Who sold you the program or...
Yeah. He uses that wireless, that, or that cellphone connection. I think it has problems. And it really, it's just informational. That's what we would intend to do, is go seek payment.
They had to know their bill was off.
Um, I don't know.
That's what I was saying. They have to notice a change like that now.
So, so, if they don't have any, if they, they don't want to do it, what would they... Would they want to fight us or everything, or do they have to...
I don't know. You know, we'll, like I said, we'll just go talk with them and offer, offer them payment arrangements. And kind of go at it from there.
So you gotta do black and white showing them what exactly?
Yeah. Yep, they'll get that same, the same information that, that you had seen.
Yeah, okay.
They were provided services, so I should be proud of them.
And like I said, this statement is in our tariff about being able to seek, uh, repayment for billing errors.
The biggest thing we talked about making so this doesn't happen again, so, we're trying to do.
Are there any other, like, red flags that come up if the, if their bill is way off whack? Does that come out so that we look at it, or...
When Scott was telling me about what was set up, the question of whether the multiplier change shouldn't even be a question. It's, that's standard. The multiplier's the same, so that fixed... I'm assuming Scott, that fixed their problem.
Yeah, it will. Hello, Gus?
Yeah?
Are you back?
I'm still, hello? I'm still here. I went to get my phone a little closer, mate. Lost your picture, but I can still hear everything.
Okay. So, um...
Just have to go see him and- Yep, see what happens. See what happens. Okay, we're done with the city administrator report?
Will do, yeah. A couple things here. Actually, I have several things. But the first one deals with the notion about having, uh, Peter's tree trimming come in and trim trees for us. And this would just be that we would hire Tim Peters and his crew for, um, an hourly fee. He would come, trim trees on the, on the streets primarily, got a couple other extra things for him, but primarily on the streets. Um, have him start on the street and send him down, send him down the street. He would, would trim the trees and we would do all the cleanup. So hopefully, he'd be able to knock out quite a few trees, uh, quite a few blocks during any day.
You're still talking a thousand dollars for eight hour day, though?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
That adds up pretty quick.
Sure does. Um, and I would tell you that he, he had given another price already and we kind of talked him down a little bit, so.
Is this something that would have to be put up for Ben?
That, I guess we could defer to the council about what you'd like to do.
Why can't we handle it with our own people?
Mainly because we don't have that equipment anymore. We sold that, that man left.
But we still have boom trucks.
We do. Um, and we've talked about that, mainly using that old Digger Derrick truck.
That's what I'm thinking.
It's, uh, it, not that it can't be done here. It'd just be a matter of, uh, a matter of time and, and being able to get onto it.
I mean, we're still looking, like you said, a thousand dollars a day for an eight-hour day. And he works a week, we got five grand tied up in it.
Yeah.
And...
How long, he didn't say how long he thought about that?
No.
And we still have-
And, and what, what I would suggest is that we would set a dollar amount that you want to spend, and that's just as much as we would do.
But we still have to supply the manpower to do the cleanup.
Yeah. And, and, you know, Lon'll tell you, they'll clean up once or twice a day from what they cut. And I don't know how long that would take him. It's not nearly as long to clean up as it is to cut.
I'm not in favor of it.
Because we rent the, the boom deal's twelve hundred bucks a week to rent the, the boom deal. Well, we could, in three days, we could take most of it out, couldn't we, Lon? It's that bad? We haven't trimmed in a while.
I mean, it just all depends on, you know, that was always fill-in time stuff, which we usually did in the winter. But, uh, you know, we can cut and cut and cut and cut, you know, just how far you want to go. You know, usually we go through the parade route every year. And, uh, but typically, we've done like Bratton addition, then we go off the next year maybe and get, get, uh, up around like the, well, from Fourth Street to, as far as you can go, you know? And, uh, kind of just work at it a little bit at a time and, you know? That's why we're bringing it to you guys to see what you got, how you guys want to handle it. I mean, we got plenty to do, but...
How, how long does a typical block, I mean?
I, well, Jack could take about four hours to do a block, I'd say. Because then I could go in there and clean it up in twenty minutes. You know, one block, about twenty minutes. You know, my guys have already gone around, we went around about a week ago, we cut every small tree in town. Trimmed every small tree up in town that we could reach from the ground. And that's already done, but, you know, there's probably a hundred fifty, two hundred trees we trimmed, I suppose.
This, this will be the third year I've been waiting for you to cut the one in my yard.
I think they're getting that done.
Yeah.
Three years, been waiting.
What's this boom truck that you were talking about?
Yeah, it's a Digger Derrick truck. We, we have two of them. This, this would be our older Digger Derrick truck. You use it to set poles and whatnot, but it has a basket on it that goes, you know, I don't know how high the thing goes, but, you know, it-
Does that go high, how high now for them? Forty-two.
It, it can, it can work. It's just not very...
It's a backbreaker. It's a manual basket. It swings just as the, like a pendulum. It's not hydraulic.
And that would tie public works up. That'd be everybody. By the time you had a guy to move ya, a guy to trim, a guy to clean up.
That's what was nice about the other one. One guy could do it. You know, and a lot of times Jack would go out, or, well, since Jack's been gone, I'd go out and trim for a while. Let them guys come up and, and, uh, clean up, you know, but, uh, doesn't matter who's in it, one guy can do it.
So what, what was we figuring that machine cost or...
Rental cost was about twelve hundred bucks a week.
Yeah, I know, but what, if we bought a used, a good used, a decent used?
Twenty thousand.
Twenty-five to thirty-five thousand. So if we rented the machine for twelve hundred for a week and Lon's guys, Lon would do have a week somewhere, do you think, that... Not in the summertime. I mean, I, that's a lot of times we'd go one or two days of trimming. And to be honest with you, two days of trimming is a lot of trimming. I mean, you're tired of running that thing after two days, you know, and then basically you take a break, you know, from it. But, uh, if you're gonna rent it for a week, why, you know, we'd hit it strong for a week, but...
But you can't get nothing else done when you're doing that.
Well, that's just it, you know? It ain't gonna be run eight hours.
Well, we need to do the truck routes for sure. It's the tops of the trailers.
So did we buy the other machine, that little digger?
Did we buy it?
Are we buying that?
No.
It's budgeted.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've not done anything with it yet.
Yeah. I think you talked about our old digger. We bought our new digger. We kept the old one because they wouldn't give us nothing for it. That's what Digger Scott was talking about before. Digger Derrick.
Digger Derrick truck, but, yeah.
Oh, that Derrick truck, yeah.
Yeah.
But I thought that little one, so you could get between hoses and stuff.
Well, that's a mini ax, though. That, we haven't done nothing with that.
Did you see them, have you been to Carol's, seen them at, that, at, or the international place that...
The Cobras, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, they got Cobras.
They have four of them, so. They have had.
We haven't even, even thought about looking at it.
I know, I just, yeah.
So how, so how long, you said four hours for a block? Is that what you're saying?
I, you, typically about four hours to get you blocked, you know? I'm guessing that, Kenny, but typically.
So the cleanup doesn't take that long?
No, if we just let them block off that street, let them lay. And really, you do one side of the street at a time. And then, then we put the grapple hook on and I'll shove them all the way down to the other end, kind of curl them up as we go and, and, uh, pick them up, haul them away, and that, that street's pretty well, you know? I, I think twenty minutes, depending on how much they drop, you know? But typically twenty minutes, I can catch up with Jack all the time. I could catch up in twenty minutes. Um, could you get us some kind of an idea of, you know, how much trimming we're looking at? You, you could trim every tree in town. I ain't kidding you. Well, I'm sure, yeah. I mean, you really could, Dave. I mean, that's why we try to pick a section like down by you, go through there, cut that whole section out. You know, and then the next year we try to get there, well, you know, by the time you get back around, you know, to your section again, they're, they're needing it bad.
Because if something needs to go out completely, I suppose, that's the problem. Or you're not gonna drop those?
The whole trees? Well, I'll drop a whole tree if I think it ain't gonna tip towards somebody's house. But if it tips somebody's house, boy.
How? How many tough spots are there, you know, when you're cutting? Would you call, you know what I'm saying?
Well, that's the thing with Bill's bucket, his bucket, it's on one side of the truck and then you got the auger on the other side. So you can only really cut from one, one side. But, yeah. That's what was nice about the four-wheel drive one. You could just kind of drive up on the property and everything else, you know? And typically forty feet. I ain't cutting no big tree down if I'm only getting forty feet up into it. Because when they're twenty-five foot above you, there ain't no place to go in that bucket. That always kind of makes us nervous anyway, so.
So having the right, right equipment is, is-
Safety.
Kind of crucial.
Yeah, that's obvious, it's kind of-
Because they can twist, you know, too?
Yeah.
I mean, we have no crap.
So, if we were cutting it down by ourselves, let's say, so, we're cleaning up, how many guys would that take?
Cutting a, cutting up a block, you mean?
Yeah, I mean-
Typically, two guys.
Typically, two guys.
It's really a lot nicer if you got somebody down on the ground telling you what's lived to cut.
Sure.
Because when you're up in the tree, you really can't tell. So it's nice to have somebody down on the ground and, of course, with that old one, it was getting so... It wasn't safe to have one guy there.
Keep the saw running, huh?
Well, he, he only got really one saw that you're using up in the tree, but...
How early, what, eight? Cost of insurance? I, see, to me, that, I think we'd get more done if I hired enough myself. I mean, if they cut, and like I said, that gives you an opportunity to do other things. I think, like, you don't have nothing else to do, is there, or not?
We got plenty to do, balance.
Well, he's probably got one or two guys on the ground watching, you know?
He'd said there'd be one helper and then Tim's wife there, too.
Yeah.
Gus, what do you think?
Well, I don't know. That's, it's, uh, I don't know. It'd be nice to find a nice machine where you could keep buying it, so we'd have it, so we could use it when we wanted to. But I don't know. Can the electric department work with the city and drop the, the trees while they clean it up or do a week of that together?
Well, it's... I don't, I don't know if it's manpower so much as that. I mean, if we could, we can trim them with two people, but a lot of it's equipment right now.
We can do it, Scott, but it'll be early winter, late fall.
Yeah.
I've got enough work lined up for the entire year, without even adding any projects.
Would he come and go as we want him? Like, he would come for half a day and then something went wrong?
Scott did, I-
Well, I talked with him and, and not necessarily about that, but, uh, just to know that he is available. Basically, now, just with a few days' notice, he'd be available.
And when I had talked to him, I told him, you know, if he doesn't have nothing going on, he's got a half a day in there. You know, would he be willing to do that? But he has to kind of coordinate that with us, too, because if, you know, if we're digging or something, we don't have time to stop and clean it then. So how, how much do you think he could get done in three days? I mean- I don't know how much I can do in three days, but I don't know how much he can do in three days. I mean... Think he could do, well, with his equipment, he could probably do a lot more than we can. I don't think so. Probably. Well, we don't have the equipment. I mean, you know, you're paying him so much an hour, he's gonna go at that pace. Yeah. You know?
I think, yeah, do what you want.
But, uh, yeah, I think Tim, you know, all you get to do is maybe try it and see what happens. But not having the equipment. That's right. You're, you're kind of in between a rock and a hard spot right now. Unless you want to go out and spend some money, but, I mean, Roy's, I, that's up to you guys, I mean. I guess I- That, that, that thing got used for a lot more things than just trimming, too, you know? Yeah. You did your banners and, and all that stuff, too, so.
We use it for a lot more things. It wasn't broke down so much.
Well, yeah. It just got to the point where, when it starts going on its own, when you're not touching anything, well, nobody really wanted to be up sixty feet in the air.
Trim on the way by.
I don't know, I, I, I think because we don't have the equipment right now, if we had the equipment, it'd be a lot, a lot different. Um, I'd be in favor of hiring it out for now. Um, maybe think about a cap, you know, um, work with Lon. And, and hiring it out for now and, and then uh.
Or take an area and tell him we want, you know, this many blocks done right now.
Yeah, you know, and see what that costs. Then you know what your costs would be.
Right.
Even if you tried it for a week or something, I don't, or three or four days, you'll know how much he can get done. And everybody goes gangbusters first and then.
Right, I mean.
That's what's nice about trimming for three or four days and then giving them their break.
Maybe try it for a week, you're, you're making a five thousand dollar commitment.
Right.
Yeah, I guess I don't even know that I would go that far. I'd encourage you to put a, to put a max on.
That's a fourth of what the machine costs.
Yeah.
Well, I, I, I'm thinking, you know, three days and, you know, with them cutting, cutting down and us cleaning up, you know, we should get quite a bit done. And, and you know, if I was in that business and, and I was going really slow just because I was getting paid by the hour.
I don't think that.
You know, I, I'd.
You don't get hired the next time.
You don't get hired the next time, that's for sure. You know.
But we could try it for three days.
But just do the small, you know, do the, Frank, which is the, are important right now. Get us by instead of trying to, you know, do the perfect job like we did before.
Yeah.
Just go where we're opposite and see how far you can get down the street.
I mean, do you wanna just skip trees and do the ones that you think you need to do, or?
Just the ones that are, you know, would cause problems.
Don't wanna butcher them.
Not worry about the year after or something, just.
I, I would tell you, the way we, we always trim, trim trees was uh, two. If you're gonna trim them, it'd be a substantial trim. You're trimming for several years. You're not gonna be back there again in the next year or two. So if we would pick and choose areas, you know, you wanna get, make sure that the truck routes always, always stay clean. That's probably one of the big ones.
And, and like Jerry's comment, you know, if we did it for a week, you know, that's five thousand bucks. That's, what'd you say, Jerry? That was uh, a fourth of what a machine would cost. You know, maybe next year we should really highly consider, you know, another machine. You know, since, you know, if it, if we keep it that, that busy, I mean, it, it makes a lot of sense to.
You could go without trimming them at all this year if you really want. I mean, you might have a few complaints, but, but uh.
Well, I think the complaints are gonna be the ones that need to come out.
Yeah.
The dead ones.
I mean, that's why we're kinda bringing it up tonight to see what you guys wanna do, because it's a substantial investment.
And maybe that's somewhere that we can look at is.
You got a tree out around the lake that Scott and I were just talking about the other, I bet you it's gonna be fifteen hundred bucks to get that tree out of there. It's up there. It's a big old cottonwood and it's up there.
What do you guys, what do you guys think about Lon checking out the spots that absolutely need to be done? And then maybe next year, you know, at budget time, we look at, you know, uh, buying one of those machines.
Putting that something, the ones you think, the, you know.
What do you think about that, Jerry?
Well, it's like, it's like the mayor said, you know, or Scott, I mean, that machine is used for a lot of purposes. I mean, it's not just tree trimming. I would say kinda like you, you, like where you've, you've been talking is, have Lon check out the truck route, do that. And maybe he's aware of any other trees that are really in need of it, get it done and wait until next year and try and buy a machine.
Well, you could probably uh, lease them.
But I wouldn't, but I wouldn't go over three days or two days of, of doing this, would I?
Yeah, I, I agree, you know. I'd tell you, my number's twenty-five hundred bucks just to give it a try.
Like a reasonable price to make.
Can Tim give you a price ahead of time?
It, he gave us an hourly price.
Yeah, but I mean, if you point out the trees and say, what's it gonna cost us? So you go ahead of time what it's gonna cost you.
I, I guess we could, we could look at that. Tough to quote that.
We tried to do a weekly price too with him.
Then we're picking shoes and, and say, can you get this done in two days?
Probably a little easier to work on time use.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, Tim's good, yeah.
Yeah.
And we don't wanna go out and buy one right now, cause if we really want one, it'll be easy pickings. We want people to time.
Yeah, it's not the time of the year to buy one anywhere.
No, no, give them twenty-five hundred bucks, see what we can get done.
What do you think?
I think that's, that's fair enough. And make, make sure that we have a copy of his insurance, just, just on it, on hand, because like I said, that there's no.
Drops in a car or a house or something.
Right, and he tells us we do and we don't see it, but now we don't. That's just to protect ours.
Just a viability thing.
Yep.
I do have an insurance certificate.
Probably.
Okay. I don't know that it's current. So, gotta get a note.
That's, then we'll see where we're at. You know, there's still eyes on the cost, you know, we still have, it's still one guy. You're talking two guys, you know, to, to do it with us. So there's a cost that, there, there's a cost there for, you know, the cleanup part is no matter what, so I do. It's the actual dropping where you can pencil out some numbers. If you took two guys to clean up, you'd have the same.
Well, and I think if you're just going down the road, we're gonna have to be there at the same time. Because if he's gonna just do a tree and then skip ten trees, we can't just let them all lay there, so we'll have to. Work with him, and that'll work. I mean, wouldn't make that work.
Yeah, and you could also see how fast it goes, maybe.
Yeah, he might just do a heckling job for us.
Yeah, but like I said, that's, it's more or less like an audition to see what, what, you know. We want him to work just like a half a day or.
Yeah, I think so too.
You know.
You wanna address that other tree then we're talking about all around the lake on Crescent Park? Are we just gonna get him in there to do it then, or?
Well, I will get a contractor, whether it's Tim or we, or whether we need to bid that one, but. Or if he's willing to come work on this hourly rate on that, but.
Yeah, the focus here and beyond trimming, not so much on removal.
There's one, it, there's one tree, it's a storm damaged tree out there. It's at Roger and Jenny Thayer's. Out there on the lakefront.
They actually hired somebody to do half of it, but there's a lot of tree there.
And this is one of those deals where, because we get, because we manage docks out there in that public park area, that we also end up with tree responsibility out there, so.
And most of them are cottonwoods.
Oh yeah. You bet.
This one's rotten in the middle too.
You know, I brought that to the, about that one of, by, one of Mrs. Moody's.
Yeah, and the guys went and checked that out the next day.
Yeah, that tree, he went, you know, looked at, you know, that's, I don't know what the story is on it.
And they checked it out right away and basically, I guess, I don't remember even remember what the answer was, other than it wasn't an immediate concern.
Which tree? I don't, I didn't hear what.
North side of Phyllis Moody's old place.
No, on the west, or the east side.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It's kinda straight by the door there. Yeah, on that door on the east side.
It's on Madison Street or?
Yeah.
But it's gotta be an ash tree then.
Yeah.
So we don't have motions then twenty-five hundred for trim, trimming? Cap it at that?
I'll make it. I'll make a motion that we try, give it a try.
Give it a shot.
For a second?
I'll say it.
Roll call.
Okay, Reese. Hus. Thank you.
Yes.
Waltman?
Yes.
Cleveland?
Yes.
All right. Take a look at some water tower painting stuff.
Oh boy.
I know, everybody's pretty excited.
They're all killed.
Yeah, that happens.
What happened with that media, anything or?
Oh yeah. We got a hundred bunch of uh, information back from that DNR guy. We could uh, it's the difference between a transit geese and homegrown geese. But we could do some shooting from Crescent. Well, and they, they, they claim that the, the amount of fecal matter from the geese in the lake is really small. But the perception we have is really big.
But what about the shoreline and?
Oh, we have, they, they don't want us to mull out. We're gonna mull out.
No, oh yeah, I'm sorry. Now you're starting to think about it.
Yeah.
They want us to go talk to us cause they like to sit in or something.
Yeah.
Liqui Vision Technology.
Actually, it's just the bear dressed in camouflage ready to shoot them.
Well, we can set up a blind in the bay and shoot towards ice.
We need a hybrid, we need a hybrid type that don't do anything.
Okay. Things are uh, coming together on, on the water tower painting project. I wanna go over some of the specs with you and make sure that everybody is, is on board with, with this notion. Um, and we're gonna look at, at this one, just the water tower painting project, one that I typed up. Few of the, few of the concepts here. Timing on this would, would look to have a bid opening on Thursday, April thirtieth, with council action, then the following uh, council meeting is April sixth.
Well, that can't be May sixth.
May sixth, you mean?
Let's go with May sixth. Uh, five percent bid bond required to submit a bid, so the, the contractor has to be bonded. Then they have to have a performance bond. There is proposed a one-year maintenance bond. Okay, date range is to do the projects. To do the project, it's proposed that we would give them two options on timing. One would be a fall for this year, September through October. But the other one would be a spring of next year. It's May, excuse me, April through May twentieth. May twentieth is actually about the week before Memorial Day la, uh, next year. That way we're not, not having the tower empty during the summertime, during peak demands of water. Um, practical matter about trying to do anything this spring, it's getting, getting a little bit late. And as we talked with the coatings consultant, he basically said, nah, you're uh, probably too late to bid this. Everybody's all bid out and you'd end up paying an exorbitant bid price for anything this, uh, this spring. Now, the good side about that though, is that he also looked at the tank and said, the tank's in generally real good condition. It doesn't do us any harm to wait a few extra months to, to get this done. Um, two hundred fifty dollars per day proposed for liquidated damages. Inspections would be done by this consultant, the, you know, Tanemic is the name of the paint. Okay, so this is basically the Tanemic salesman who, who can come around and do a couple of inspections during the project. Okay, it's not daily inspections, and it prob, seriously, it's probably once on the inside and once on the outside. But as we'll see here, when we talk about a couple of things later, they also do a one-year inspection with the contractor. And that's the time where I think you're really seeing any, uh, any potential problems that would need to be fixed. Uh, middle of the page goes through the cost estimate from the coatings consultant, the Tanemic salesman. Exterior's around ninety thousand and interior wet part is around seventy-five thousand. The interior dry, uh, doing the base plate, about twenty-five hundred dollars. And then they have a special coating now that would coat the, the tank, uh, belly of the tank and the riser. If we look in this, I wanna show you what, what we're really talking about, and that's on page nine. In the picture packet. You talk through those pictures a little bit there, Lon, and?
Well, just know that these pictures were taken four years ago.
Yep.
And uh, the bottom, you're looking at the bottom underside inside the uh, inside the tower. And the reason that he's saying all this rust is up there is because it sweats so much, and it does. I mean, when you go in there in the summertime, it's like, it's raining in there. And they've got this new, new coating that, uh, it's an insulating coating. And I tried getting ahold of the guy today that they, they tried this up in Wisconsin. It's relatively new process. And it basically eliminates all the sweat. And this, this company actually tried it on just part of the tower, and on the part they did, they did it on it, it eliminating all the sweating problems. And he said that's what's making this rust so bad, is just because it sweats so much. And if you can insulate it, well then, he thinks that'll supposedly is supposed to take care of it. And if you go in the tower right now, it's, it's substantially worse than what this is. These pictures are showing.
Whereabouts in Wisconsin is that at, you know?
Um, it's uh, Lake Geneva, I think it was.
South of, it's north of.
Got some fancy golf course on it.
Yeah. Sounds like a road trip.
Yeah. I tried calling today. He'll be in tomorrow. In fact, he's gonna call us, call us back tomorrow. Cause it is quite a bit of toss on. I think it's twenty thousand dollars for that.
I'm not too far from up there.
Right, yeah, that's what I mean.
But that's, that's kinda the one change from what we had ever talked about before, is this different type of coating on the, on the underbelly. Where it says the interior dry at twenty-five hundred and this at twenty thousand. Other, other bids to say paint the entire belly, um, was around nine thousand-ish, and this is twenty-two five. If you look at the cost, uh, in total, this estimate from the consultants, one eighty-seven five. We had budgeted a hundred seventy-two thousand down there at the bottom of the page. Not that we can't, we can come up with some more money to do this if we needed to. But uh, again, that's, that's what's budgeted. Just know that if, if we need this extra fifteen thousand dollars, we could, we could get it. It's probably uh, additional money from sales tax and an, and an additional borrowing month, more from the electric improvement fund. Um, let's just walk through some of the packet then. Uh, the next page is actually something that, that I put together too. This is just some stuff on surface preparation. Uh, where for, for the corroded areas on the exterior and then anything on the interior, this is the description of what happens to prepare it. Basically, it's a sand blast to uh, bare metal to shiny metal. And that would happen on the entire interior of the tank. The exterior is, is a power wash at thirty-five hundred PSI power wash. And then the interior, excuse me, the, yeah, excuse me, I, I misspoke. The exterior corroded areas and the interior, that's that commercial blast. It, it is a sand, it's a sand blast, but it's not a sand blast to uh, to uh, shiny metal. The bottom one, the interior wet, that is a sand blast to shiny metal. Those are different specs that are, um, these S, SSPC numbers, that's the spec numbers that's, that's referenced in our specs. So that everybody knows exactly what standard the uh, surface needs to be prepared to. Rest of the packet is basically the specs, and it worked well that we were working with this, uh, this Tanemic consultant. And he basically prepared these specs for us on, on how the, uh, how the, which paints to use and how, how to prepare it and how to apply. So I just, gonna walk through the highlights. Again, this is, is the references to those uh, descriptions that I just had. A lot of it can be done with power tool cleaning, and that's wire brushes and, and different uh, power tools. But then the commercial blast cleaning and the near white metal blast. Uh, if you ever hear of DFT, dry film thickness, that is how you measure the amount of paint that had been put on. And this is done basically by a, oh, like a little zapper gun, uh, radar type gun that tests the thickness of the paint. Uh, middle of the page there with quality assurance. The manufacturer, in this case, basically the manufacturer's gonna be Tanemic, and they've got plenty of years of experience, very well known. We had them come because we know that we've, we have used their product. That's what's on the tank right now. So we had the cons, the salesman come. He, he knew the type of product that was on the tank. It's lasted well, really high quality stuff. And then knew what to do then to have the proper stuff to overcoat them. Uh, but B, applicator's qualifications. This would say that all of our uh, companies who are gonna apply this need to be in business for a minimum of five years. And um, at least you know that you're getting a, a well-qualified consul, or contractor to do that. Flip it to the next uh, page again. There, there is some environmental requirements about air temperature. And then surface temperature, something about the dew point, but uh, the temperature range or, is just whatever it is under the manufacturer's requirements. Again, bottom of the page, manufacturer is exclusively Tanemic. Then you get to the bottom, very bottom of the page where you're talking about the coatings. The, for the exterior, that's the hydro, hydroflown. And that type of paint in the, and tells you the type of surface preparation, then tells you the same thing uh, for the, for the interior, uh, also telling you then the total, DFT total, total thickness of the stuff as it's applied. The number of coats varies whether it's interior or exterior. Bottom of the next page just notes the thing on disinfection, that of course there's parameters and, and certain procedures in place about getting the tank put back into place. And the contractor's responsible for, for making sure that, that it goes back into use properly. And then, uh, the next page talks about the field quality control. Again, these are inspector services. We would have the manufacturer's rep doing this for us, doing a little bit of the inspection. They also do the one-year inspection. This, uh, I think was a terrific idea. We have a one-year maintenance bond with the contractor, but they also got to do this one-year inspection. So before the bond would expire, they would have to do this inspection, know that we're pleased with the project and any problems are fixed.
So is this the manufacturer of the paint? And then they'll get bids and they'll inspect the work done by the person who sprays the paint?
Yeah, but there's only one bid and it's to the contractor. The contractor has to buy their own paint. But the, the spec is only, they can only purchase this Tanemic paint.
When was the last time this was done?
Ninety-six.
It's held up real well. I mean, it's a lot many years, you know, it's getting time.
The pictures here, they're still fairly representative, knowing that it's four years later and, and nothing gets better. But, uh, um, the salesman was, he had positive things to say about the tank. The way, the way that the stuff has worn over the years had real good things to say.
When they were talking about, is this a foam that goes in underneath there?
I would say, that's how I would characterize it as. It's kind of a, an insulating process and then they put a paint over top of that and it has to be cured and dried. I've got some information here. I don't know if Scott gave you that.
No, I didn't.
Doesn't really tell you a whole lot in this, but, uh, um...
Can you think of any drawbacks? I mean, just for inspecting of the, of the?
Well, and we're only going off of, we met with this salesman the other day and it's something new.
Yeah, that's a...
And, you know, he had mentioned four tanks that they have tried it on and everybody's been pleased with it. Now longevity is yet to be seen, but, um, his paints are, I mean, they're top-notch, I think. But, uh, you know, and this, that's why I'd like to talk to some of these guys first.
Yeah, that's a...
Um, because it's substantially about ten thousand dollars more to have that done. Now, he did say, like, the barrel of the inside would last fifty years, the paint on there would last fifty years. And of course, we're thirty years old in there. Now, if we put this coating on, got twenty years out of it, then you're probably looking at painting the inside of that barrel the next, next twenty years, you're going to have to do the inside of the barrel too, because it would be fifty years old then. So, you know, it's, uh, I'd like to get more information on that, uh, and just see. I mean, hearing it from the salesman, it sounds like a good product, but, uh, it'd be nice to know if everybody that's put it on is pleased.
Yeah. Could get some of that, that'd be interesting to hear from.
How long do they think it takes to do something, or they don't put a time?
Three, three weeks?
About three weeks.
And that's why we really don't want to be doing this during summertime. You know, the tank's empty and you're, and you're running off of pumps, so... Any other comments on that? We'll continue to check into this insulating, um, stuff, but other than that, we getting close?
Yeah.
Okay?
A little forward, but... Yeah, that's just it. It's, it's not getting any better.
Does the council, you want to revisit this issue before you authorize the bids to go out?
I don't, I think we should. Well, except for the insulation part, I would, I think everything's fine.
We need to revisit that. It may push the timing back, but it doesn't matter much since we're not doing it until fall.
Till fall or next year, if it's spring.
I'd rather take our time, make the right decision than try to hurry something through and then...
Well, if we wait till, if you did it next year, you have another budget year to upset some more money, it's like, that's, that's...
Um, one of my next things deals with Cleanup Day, and that was another one of the sheets that was there at your table, this one? Um, I guess the question is, do you want to do Cleanup Day? We're actually getting several calls on this already about people who, who are interested in it. As I talked with Lon, you know, he's really pleased with the way this has worked here the past couple of years. And this is what we've done, that people have to apply, they got to pay their ten-dollar fee in order to participate in Cleanup Day. And then there's these rules that they need to abide by and, and have much better luck with people abiding by the rules this way than, than just having a free-for-all. Rob Rudd will help us out again, and he's available on Monday and Tuesday, March, uh, excuse me, May fi- fourth and fifth. And this is typically the time that we would do this. We always try to do it the first week of May, be right in line with, with what we would hope and, and Rudd is available.
Oh, so it's not April 28th and 29th?
Nah, this is last year's form.
Okay. So we're talking May, what?
Uh, fourth and fifth, if you guys want to do this again. Because the process would work the same. They, they can throw out just, just about anything. We don't take construction, construction and remodeling debris anymore. And we get hung for truckloads of that at a time. So that, uh, we don't do that. And then the issue about appliances, it still takes appliance stickers, still costs to get rid of a lot of these appliances yet. And we would still propose to do the same thing, it's a twenty-dollar appliance sticker. Uh, it's worked pretty well that people apply and then they just go on a list. And the day, the weekend before, the list goes to the police department, they go around and check everybody, make sure they're on the list and give them an application if they're, if they've got stuff out and haven't gotten on the list, so... I guess I would suggest we might want to do that again, same way.
I'd make that a motion.
Second?
Oh, second.
Oh, second, good.
Roll call.
Excuse me, a lot of seconds.
All right, uh, Wolfman?
Yes.
Cleveland. Cleveland.
Ah, he's smiling.
Way to feel acknowledged, Gus.
Yes.
Okay.
Small motion there.
Thank you.
Yes.
Us, Reese?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Time warp.
This is working real well.
I do have a, have a few other things yet, sorry, guys. But, uh, and, um, this is just an FYI, and I think we have it properly addressed. Just know that we had received a notice of violation on sewer. And it dealt with us exceeding limitations for ammonia nitrogen, some monthly limitations. This occurred back in October and November. And so we got a, a notice of violation, but basically they just asked us what, what the deal was. You know, did we do something different? Do we think we had a problem? And we had recirculated some, uh, supernate out of the, out of the digester and out of the holding tank, back into the system. Just, you know, I guess envision this, that, uh, we're waiting for Randy Drosh to come land and apply that stuff. Tanks are completely full, they're going to start to overflow. We had to do something, so we recirculated it back into the system, so... We've acknowledged that to the DNR and hadn't heard anything back from them, but that'll be the answer. Just know that the folks out at Sunset Drive are, and that's that frontage road out on the, on east end of the lake, kind of coordinating amongst themselves. They sure would like to have a hard-surface road out there. And Lon and I have met with, with them and what could they do as a homeowners group to do that? And basically, we had, we kind of left it that, uh, you know, if the homeowners group really wants to do something, we would leave the ball in their court to prove that they can get everybody on board. You know, if, if they have some folks who don't really want this to happen, um, and, and wouldn't pay the, uh, pay their proportionate share and it becomes essentially a special assessment, the city really becomes involved. And it's way back to the beginning of the process and you hire an engineer and you got to have that engineer do all of the special assessment work off the designs. So, um, they want to try to do this, this privately, and that's kind of where we've left things for now. I guess just know that they're talking about it.
So would that, would block top or cement?
They'd probably look at concrete. Uh, we have an issue with the Once More Store up there that, uh, the Once More Store, I got a call last week from one of the neighbors and it is now, well, now the Once More Store is stacking tires out there by their, by their building. Well, what they're really doing, they've stacked tires there for a couple of days and then, uh, Royce was on it the time. Royce went up and talked with them. What's, what's up with the tires? Well, I'm going to, uh, I've been laying a tarp on my roof where it leaks and the tires hold down the tarp. And they're up there.
How long is that going to stay there?
Ted went up, talked with them today. What's the roofing plan, chief?
He said that's the permanent fix. That's how they fixed, uh, silos for years, and that's how he fixed his roof. So that's actually his roofing job.
Sounds like, um...
And I never heard of it before.
Dangerous building.
Said whenever he had a leak in his silo, he covered it up and it worked for years.
Pretty good round, Nick.
You know, there, there's real concerns with that too. I mean, they have roofing problems, but...
The whole building is, uh, got to be a fire hazard.
You know, it's jam-packed full of stuff now. And, um, again, roofing problems. And now the first time that it rains, those tires fill up with water. You'll just have stagnant water there for the entire summer now. And just know that the neighbors are real concerned about this. We may want to take a look at doing something to it...
As a nuisance?
Yeah, and really address the situation, not just you can't have tires there, but is it, you know, what's the status of, of the roof? Is it a dangerous building? Do we need to have, get our building inspector involved? What's the, uh, you know, have, have Jimmy get involved as potential fire hazards?
Yeah, is there something, I'm sure if they would have something code, code?
It talks about safety, so... I mean, figure out some way to cause harm to a neighbor, but...
Let's take a look at our code. I mean, it's my opinion to, to take a look at our code and, and see if it, um...
Yeah, do some research on that.
A nuisance in that regard, I guess.
Well, it, I think it, at the very least, it's a nuisance and, and it's a nuisance with, with the tires. It's a, uh, you know, it certainly isn't a static nuisance, some people can see it, but it's more of a environmental and a health risk.
Right.
When it becomes mosquito season, everybody...
It's even them or, or the neighbors.
Well, if you had, you know, somebody with a house and they had tarp over with tires, we wouldn't hesitate to...
Right.
We had that down here on Vine Street, same thing. We put tarps on it and it went up behind the lumberyard, had a tarp on it forever. Before they tore it down.
Sure, yeah.
So, I mean, you know...
We need to go after this. I just need to know what code we can use.
Um, yeah, what's, yeah.
If you can give us a plan of attack, when we got to do what? Go through the steps? Should we do it right?
Right.
A couple, couple other things. Most of you, I think, saw the, the correspondence from the DNR about the Canadian geese. And really haven't done anything with that, we just got that today. So I just a copy for you to, uh, take a look at what the, what the DNR is proposing and I'll, I'll discuss this with the mayor too, as far as that goes. Morrie, the writer of the report, has offered to come down and discuss it more, which we may want to take him up on that.
Give you something to read while you load your shotgun.
I was thinking bathroom, but Morrie's going to leave home.
Electric apprenticeship, um, the guys go down and take their, both of them are going down and taking their final exams tomorrow. Um, they, they had actually been scheduled for last Friday. Brian Sorenson's dad passed away, so got rescheduled for a couple of days. So yep, they hope to get that taken care of tomorrow. Performance evaluations for all the employees are done. Still need to get mine, mine done. Now, this would be that three sixty evaluation where everybody will individually evaluate me. And this is actually a computerized thing. So I'll send in your email and they will probably send you, send you out an email and it's just a click the computer thing for eighty-eight questions about, uh, responses on, on, uh, I think pertaining to management. But, uh, I will get that set up tomorrow and you ought to have that, I, I think, pretty quickly. And if we can turn that around within a week or so, that would be good. So we have the mayor and council evaluating, then we also have staff evaluating. About it. Northwest Iowa League meeting is Thursday, March 26th at Cattlemen's in SAC.
At four o'clock early, though.
Pardon me?
That's pretty early, four o'clock, five o'clock.
That's, that's the five thirty-one, yeah. And I do plan to be gone for Wednesday, Thursday, Friday Municipal Management Institute in Iowa City. Any, you get on the bets, Memorial Mayor?
We're kicking fifty thousand, really close. And we're still working on the lights. We haven't figured out which lights to use. Just every day, just a little closer. And we're hoping to have Lon build that for us. Lon will build it. Because we have the cement from Halitz and he's going to give us the dirt. But if we're going to put it in a city deal, I'd like to have the city guys build it so that we don't have any issues.
And then I got, all I have is, uh, the alley, like on Chambers there and, uh, where it used to be movies. That needs a couple of scoops of gravel.
Okay, did he blade it today? We're, we've...
Yeah.
Bladed all the alleys.
Pretty muddy, it's pretty muddy.
Okay, okay.
If it rain, you know, more, then it gets pretty muddy, so I just thought you could, you break out some gravel, send rounds.
Well, we'll get some of them out.
Well, we did the hometown pride, we interviewed two people and we picked one guy, tried to hire him, and then he didn't take the job. So we're right back to interviewing more down the road, so... I think we have, we're looking for one more person to get on hometown committee.
Uh, we have six volunteers for our local hometown pride committee too, so...
Was one of those gal I shagged?
Yep, she's there. But until we get a coach, we can't do anything, so we're kind of stuck. What about a late cleanup? Should we work on that or not?
Um, I guess I, I'd raise that issue with, uh, with the LPA. Is it time to do another shoreline cleanup? And that would be a lot of trimming, trimming brush, getting rid of a lot of the scrub stuff again. And Men's Club kind of works with that a lot. It, it ends up being the city involved with that a lot, because we end up having to use city trucks and everything to do that.
Sure.
So if we continue to work towards that, that's okay?
Yeah, look for some trouble spots.
Won't get cleaned up unless we do it. It just won't happen.
Again, I mean... It was, I'd tell you, three years ago, maybe I did that.
Yeah. I thought it looked really nice when they did it last time.
Those two animals gone.
We're still working on a, you know, a proposed settlement of that lawsuit, Gus. That's it.
Okay.
Still working on it.
All right.
Other five years, no.
Lon had something.
Nobby called me tonight about them trees they walked through there, they're going to walk through it again tomorrow. He thinks it's going to just tear the heck out because they sunk a dozer today. So he's wondering whether they're going to be able to do it. And then he walked in there and he said, man, there's some big trees there. He said, I don't know if Mike will, if he can get out. So, just to let you know, he's going to go through it tomorrow and I won't be here because I, I got that deal at the hospital, so...
Okay.
So where are you taking trees on?
This is for the bike trail on Isla Hall.
The stakes are out there and they're going to go so many feet on each side.
I told him to get what he could get and then what the other stuff.
Okay.
Want you to do a germ?
Are you making a motion, Gus?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Needing a germ.
All right.
Can you see me now, Scott?
No.
Yeah?
I don't know.
Okay, now can you see me?
I can, yes.
I can't see you.
Probably a good thing. Probably a good thing.
Okay, well, good night.
Yep, you take care, Gus.
K O L B.
Once more, yeah, once more. See, we hit that one other time. And that time over trees, derrys. I looked at them the other day and that's a ten-minute tree. I dropped the whole trees. I think I can drop all of them. The last guy, I don't know.
Throw them away.
Pardon me?
Throw them away.
Okay.